And the decisions that we make that affect the children and the parents of Lincoln County. Well, we just ask you that you'll provide safety in this coming week. And Lord, as we deal with this COVID crisis and taking care of the emotional part of what the children go through that maybe we do not see, that you're able to remind us of that for the empathy that we can have through the teachers and the students. We ask you to go with us this day in the decisions that we make. And again, we give you glory in Christ's name we do pray. Amen. This time, our February 6, 2020, Lincoln County Board of Education meeting will come to order. The meeting is held in conjunction with our board winner retreat. The first item is consider approval of the January 4, 2021 board minutes. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Mr. Tucker, Mr. Bradley, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Motion carries. Next item is consider approval of agenda per policy 1.403. We're, Dr. Heath, as my records reflect, the items that we'll be adding today will be the SFE contract, ESER 2.0 funding, operational plan revisions, school bus garage truck purchase, FFA approval for pursuing a building and location at Lincoln County High School. Is that correct?
That's what I have yesterday.
This will come under item 10 as we proceed with the agenda. Does any other board member have anything to add? All in favor, please say aye.
I have a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll make the motion.
Second, thank you. See, I got off track anyhow. All in favor, please say aye. Oppose likewise. That brings us to item four, annual review of section five policies. Mr. Posey?
We have five policies for, this will be second and final reading for each. Does anybody want to pull any of them out or we'll just vote on them all at the same time? Policy 1.301, executive committee. Should have it in front of you. Policy 4.400, textbooks and instructional materials. Policy 6.303, interrogations and searches. Policy 6.402, physical examinations and immunizations. Policy 6.405, medicines. These were, we all, we went over these last month, first reading, so this will be second and final.
Since we didn't have a committee meeting, I'll need a motion and a second.
Make a motion to accept.
Ms. Haynes made a motion. Mr. Bradley, second. Does it, any discussion on them or does anybody want to pull anything out? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Motion carries. Next item is by Mr. Luna, E-Rate contracts. That's rough when you cameraman and have to get you, make sure you get yourself right.
I just turned up to get myself on there. This is our typical time of year where we start presenting E-Rate contracts. This one's a little more unique. The state of Tennessee has actually done a very good thing for the technology world. They, they put in a statewide mini-bid process. They've awarded a multi-vendor contract and we can go out to everybody who offers their service to us and we do a, it'll still be considered statewide contract and we can ask for services off of that contract. So we did our internet that way this time instead of having to do a full RFP and get a bunch of bad bids in. So we had three people respond to that. AT&amp;T was the low price winner on that and that's who we had already. So we're just asking for a four-year extension or a four-year agreement, I guess, on that state contract for our internet service. And then our current network that feeds all of our schools goes through E&amp;A. It's what we call our wide area network. The original contract had expired. We had the option to renew it two additional times for one year at a time and this will be our first option to renew. So I'm asking to renew that one as well.
Are you putting them together?
Yes.
Prices go up on that or anything?
No, actually prices went down. It's, right now, what we're paying for a, our internet service at the school level is district-wide is one gig and the price went down for our internet service. I can get two gigs for less than what I was paying right now for one gig. So every year, for the most part, since I've been here, internet prices per megabit has gone down. So it's definitely a good thing for us. So we'll, we'll double our internet speed and the overall price for our internet will still go down. So it's a very good deal for us, hopefully.
Has anybody got any questions? Do I have a motion to approve both of those?
Don't move.
Mr. Tucker?
Second.
Mr. Bradley, second. There's no, there's no new money per se.
No, no.
We're just rolling the contract. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Motion carries. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item is the approval of building use, Dr. Heath.
There should be one in your packet.
Link County Volunteer Fire and Rescue.
For unity, yes, that's the only one.
And this is just for the parking, parking lot, correct?
Yes, sir.
So there wouldn't be any cost or anything? It'll go under the, is it the A one or?
Community.
Community use.
Yes, there shouldn't be a charge for this.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Tucker makes a motion. Mr. Bradley, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Motion carries. Next item is considering the acceptance of the cafeteria and activity funds audit. Dr. Heath?
That's the, the audit that we went over in the work session. The cafeteria funds portion of that, they, they actually audit the procedures and that's done, that's reported, I guess, through Mr. Bradford's office into the state. So it's not a part of this right here, right now, today. So it just need to be approved on.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion.
Ms. Haynes makes a motion.
I second the motion.
Mr. Dunn, second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Motion carries. The next item is a consideration of the extension of the FF-CRA involved with the COVID. Dr. Heath?
That was presented to you during the work session. As you recall, the federal requirement ended December 31st. As a board, you voted to extend it to today and to revisit it today. And what we're requesting is that you extend it through the end of March, which is allowable by law. And we will present to you the updated form or sometime during the next month because we'd be creating our own form for that, which I shared with you earlier.
I'd like to make a motion that we extend this program through the end of March. And do I need to add that we're going to modify it to not be called FF-CRA?
Yes.
So extend this program to the end of March and modify a couple of items on the list and rename it.
We have a motion, Mr. Posey, to modify it to move it through March and the renaming of the components of the document.
I'll second.
Mr. Tucker, second. Any other discussion? Roll call on that, please, ma'am. I don't think it's needed, but with what it is and involving.
Dr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Haynes?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson?
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Dunn?
Aye.
Eight and zero.
Eight and zero, motion carries. Next item, nine, is the review of lunch prices and possible approval of changes in meal prices and that's.
That's on, that's on our annual agenda and it is, there are no recommended changes at this time. So there's no, no action needed.
We're not going to do any, leave it as is and we'll go on to item number 10. First item on that is the renewal of the five-year contract and this will be the fourth year with SFE in regard to their adjustment for price coming forward. Dr. Heath?
Yes, Ms. Brenly, we've negotiated with SFE in regard to the proposal as allowed per contract. The 3.4% that the CPI indicated, we negotiated and it's now 1.75% is, is what we ask you to agree to for the coming year.
Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the contract.
Mr. Posey moves to approve the SFE contract. Ms. Haynes, second. Any other discussion? Roll call me on that, please, ma'am.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Haynes?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson?
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Dunn?
Aye.
Dr. Daniel?
Aye.
Eight and zero.
Eight and zero, motion carries. Next item is to be done is the ESER funding 2.0.
Based on our discussion this morning and the presentation, we would request that for us to prepare and submit the request for ESER 2.0 to include the following items: the FF-CRA pay that you, that you just approved the form for, the HVAC at Unity, summer boot camps as required through legislation, teacher and staff bonuses, and charging towers for the, for the devices at schools, which will total approximately $2.6 million. And we will, we will actually give you a copy of what we submit at the next board meeting.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Does this, does this automatically say we're going to approve it, the bonus to teachers?
No, we will have to, we'll have to vote. No, this is just to get the funding mechanism in play. This allows you, when you do approve it, to be able to use these funds for it too. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the findings.
Mr. Posey moves to approve the funding per Dr. Heath's recommendation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bradley, second. Any discussion further on those items? If you would, roll call me, please, ma'am.
Mrs. Haynes?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson?
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Dunn?
Aye.
Dr. Daniel?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Eight and zero.
Eight and zero, motion carries. Next item, Dr. Heath, his operational plan revisions with COVID.
Yeah, this was the plan we presented to you last month. This is our new operational plans that we have for our schools in regard to COVID-19. Basically, we put into the plan between full and in-person, which is what we want to be every day, and full virtual. We have two more options in there, which we've described to you as the A/B option and the modified virtual option. We ask you to approve that.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept.
Mr. Bradley makes a motion to accept it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Dunn, second. Any discussion further? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Motion carries. The next item is a truck purchase and I was trying to find it and I did find it. It's, the school bus department is next in line on our vehicle inventory. And here is Mr. Gill's response on, I'd ask him the breakdown of the vehicle and what we were replacing. The truck being replaced is a half-ton truck. The reason seeking to replace it with a single rear-wheel, one-ton truck is better to respond to the needs of the department. This replacement vehicle allows to carry more essential items to quickly put a bus back in service, thus reducing time required to deliver students to home or school. This model truck is appropriate size and equipped with the necessary equipment to reduce the need for tow expense. The ability to carry more parts, perform more actions, save expenses, one of the justification of going up to a higher-level, heavy-duty truck. Also, the truck's expense has been increased by this addition of a diesel engine. The reasoning of the diesel engine has a longer life thereby extending the period of time before needed replacement. The vehicle, as requested, would utilize the same fuel and parts as current buses, allowing more repairs to be completed in-house there by also reducing costs. I request this purchase to increase the productivity, efficiency, safety, and save some expense over the long haul. And this vehicle is, was in the order, Dr. Heath?
Yes.
Anything else to?
No.
Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the purchase.
Mr. Posey moves to approve the purchase, I have a second.
Second.
Mr. Bradley, second. Any discussion further?
I'd just like to say that, you know, a few years back, we, we asked Dr. Heath to start the process of coming up with a budgeted way to, to replace some of our vehicles that were getting some age on it and, and this seems to be in line with that, so.
And I want to make, for the record, I also want to make note that the purchase of this truck would come from our transportation equipment item, which is the same, line item, which is the same line that our bus purchases come from. Is that right, Cole? Okay, our bus purchases come from. So I just want to make a note, let that be in the minutes.
Any other discussion? Roll call me, please, ma'am.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson?
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Dunn?
Aye.
Dr. Daniel?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Haynes?
Aye.
Eight and zero.
Eight and zero, motion carries. Next item is during a work retreat this morning, Mr. Ms. Burnham gave a presentation after the meeting with several stakeholders on proposing for the board, get a, go ahead from the board for them to do the preliminary studies and what they need to do to line up, to put in a facility that will serve as an ag center for the students of Lincoln County High School and incorporate the community stakeholders and others and businesses in the area. And this motion, if somebody entertains, is to, for them to seek the process, to go forward in looking at a site selection and all the necessary items to bring back to the school board. I guess it would be the Capitol Project Committee to go through it for recommendation through the, to the full school board. Do I, anyone have a motion, or Dr. Heath, or Labor break further?
No, that's, that's good.
I'll make a motion that Mr. Ms. Burnham can continue the search for the building.
Mr. Dunn makes a motion to, for them to be able to go ahead and pursue the site and then come back to the Capitol Budget Committee at a later date with the recommendations of cost and location and that thing. It's second by Ms. Haynes. Any other, any other discussion? Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Motion carries. Next item, Dr. Heath, Dr. Lem, is a tuition agreement with Limestone County, Alabama Schools.
We've discussed this this morning in our retreat. We also discussed it last year at this time during the retreat. Limestone County, Alabama, and Lincoln County, Tennessee, schools has had an ongoing agreement for about 30 years regarding students that live in Tennessee and Lincoln County specifically that would be allowed to attend Limestone County schools in Limestone, Alabama. After all of our discussions, my recommendation is that if, if the board wants to approve this agreement for this year, that it be only for the children that are currently enrolled in the high school because it does impact their ability as Tennessee residents to get the Hope Scholarship if they go to Tennessee College, even though they're not going to a Tennessee high school. But, you know, we have a great school down there in the Blanche community and we offer transportation to these students to there and to Lincoln County High School. But I think as a good, a good step and a good faith to those children that we allowed to, to be a part of this in the past, it would be a good, a good faith showing to grandfather and the current students only. And I do have that list of students and I would, if you approve it as I'm recommending it, I'll be getting in contact with their superintendent in the next couple of days and just verify that, that that's the only list of students that live in Lincoln County is what they provided to me last month.
I'll make a motion, we go with Dr. Heath's recommendation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bradley, second. We've got a recommendation, a motion, seconded to prefer, allow a grandfather-in-law of the existing and then we would no longer honor the agreement thereafter.
Existing high school.
Existing high school. There any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Motion carries. Next item, Mr. Cole Bradford.
Got a short agenda. First item are the financials. Are there any questions? Not, I recommend acknowledging receipt of those financials.
Motion to approve the financials. Mr. Posey moves to accept.
Second.
Mr. Bradley, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise.
Second item, the commission-approved budget calendar. Again, this just shows the big dates. It's not getting into the detail of the timing. Dr. Heath coordinates a lot of the timing, but this is the calendar, very similar to last year, other than we did eliminate some in-person meetings for the county and we'll probably likely do the same this year. We don't ask department heads to come before the committee unless the committee asks them to, so. And, no, I got, I'm sorry, y'all, I got backwards on my, well, the last item are the budget amendments. Had two budget amendments, a 141 and a 142 amendment. I'm not going to read those to you, but I'll answer any questions. If not, I recommend approval.
Everybody's got them in the packet, do I have a recommendation to approve them? Mr. Tucker moves.
Second.
Mr. Bradley, second. Any further discussion on them? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise.
Go ahead.
We appreciate your diligence you've provided to the system over the years and we wish you the best in your coming endeavors and don't be a stranger.
I will. Thank y'all, I appreciate y'all always.
Points of information, Dr. Heath?
Sure. Got a couple of things here. Before I get to that, just, Cole, we are going to miss you. I know in working with my colleagues across the state, many of the school systems that their counties are on the Act of 81, which we are, I hear some horror stories sometimes. And when they ask me how it's going in Lincoln County, I always tell them how good it's going and they look, some of them look at me funny like, really? And, you know, I think it has so much to do with the person that's in the position you're in now and not just your expertise, but your relationship and how you work with, with school system, with the commission and everybody. So you're going to be missed, we wish you best of luck. Yes, sir. Okay, a couple of other things I have on points of information. One is just an update. I know you, you've heard a lot about the special session that the legislature had a couple of weeks ago. I know TSBA has sent some information out. I've, you know, right now, I promise you, across the state, superintendents, we're sort of digesting things. We're meeting with the commissioner in her office several times a week, trying to make sure we get this thing figured out. We just received some funding information yesterday about some of the things that we're required to do. So, you know, it's going to pick up speed quite a bit and I, and that, that's my biggest concern about it is, is can we manage the speed in which we have to get some of these things planned and, and executed? But the biggest bill that, that I would talk to you about is, was the learning loss bill. It's the Tennessee Learning Loss and Student Acceleration Act. And forgive me for reading a couple of things, but it's a very detailed bill that I've had to go through four or five times and do my own highlighting, do my own organizing of the information to make sure that I understand it so I can communicate it with our staff and so forth. So it, actually, there are some camps that are going to be funded or partly funded by the, by the state of Tennessee. One is the Summer Learning Camp, which is for this summer coming up and the next summer. And that will be six hours a day and that doesn't include lunch. Lunch is be added on to that. So it'd be at least six and a half hours a day of students being in school. It must include four hours of reading and math instruction. It must include one hour of physical activity or playtime, one hour of intervention. It's for, overall, it's for students in grades, entering grades one through five and it's five days a week for six weeks. Now, please understand, as we start our planning, we can modify that and get approval from the commissioner's office to modify it. You know, in the summer, we do some energy savings things and, and really don't do a whole lot of things in our buildings on Fridays. So that's still an option, but we just have to get some approval. But, but that's the gist or the, the big picture of that Summer Learning Camp for the next two summers. There is another camp called a Learning Loss Bridge Camp for the next two summers. It's, it's six hours of daily programming, much like the first camp. It must include four hours of reading, four hours of math, one hour of intervention, one hour of physical activity. So, so far, it doesn't sound any different, does it? Well, this one is for grades six through eight, students entering grades six through eight. It's a little bit of a different camp and it's five days a week for only four weeks. Okay? The third camp is the After School Summer Learning Mini Camp for the next two summers. So, so far, all the, the three camps I'm mentioning are for the next two summers. This one is also known as, known as the Stream Mini Camp. Stream meaning science, technology, reading, engineering, arts, and math. It's for one hour of focused stream education for students entering grades one through five, four days a week, six weeks, and provided by a licensed teacher or someone who goes through a training process to be able to do that. So, so we've got the some, the next two summers for the lower grades, grades one to five, six hours a day camp, an extra hour could be for that stream camp. For grades, students entering grades six through eight, six hours a day for four weeks and then they could go to that extra one-hour day. On all of those, we have to provide lunch and breakfast or lunch and snack or lunch and snack and breakfast. So, so that's, that's those camps. And then there is one additional camp. It's called the Learning Loss Bridge Camp that starts in two years, in 2023. And this is six hours a day, grades four through eight. Must be four hours of reading and math instruction, one hour of intervention, one hour of physical activity, lunch and snacks and breakfast or lunch and one of the other two. And that's five days per week for four weeks. And with that bill, I'm, I'm not going to go into the details of it now, but with that bill, there's some attachment of requirements for students to participate that are in certain grade, have had certain scores on tests and so forth. All of these camps will be looking to, to fill these camps up with students who score below proficient on their most recent TCAP or recent screening in math or reading. But after, after we have it planned, we know how many seats we have, we know how many of those kids are going to come because the first two years is optional, then we can open it up to other students. So, you know, there's a lot of planning to go on, but I wanted to have an idea, big picture idea of that one. And that one's, that one's a little tough to grasp at first, like I said, and, but we'll be working hard over, in fact, we have a big meeting coming up here internally this coming week on that. The next bill was the Tennessee Literacy Success Act. Tennessee Literacy Success Act, and this bill basically says that the department will be providing screeners, so we won't have to pay for screeners in math and language arts. And these screeners can be used for students as they, as an indicator of who needs to go to these summer camps. And also, there's one, well, one more thing on that one is, it does talk a little bit about third grade retention if students aren't on grade level in reading. And then what they can do instead, and then in the fourth grade, same thing. So that one, that one's not as detailed, but it basically sets into legislation a couple of things like that. And the last one, the third one, I'm sorry, is the Hold Harmless Law, which basically says that as long as we test 80% of our kids this year on these state-mandated tests, that there will be no school-level accountability as far as, there won't be schools that are put on a priority list or put in the Achievement School District. We won't get a letter grade for our school this year as long as we test that percent of students. Student growth composites, it says that, like, for teachers and their evaluations, it talks about if the student growth on this year's test helps a teacher in their overall final evaluation score, then it can be used. If it doesn't help, then it's not to be used. So it sort of holds them harmless, and that they get the better of the two. And that's, oh, the other thing is, and we'll be bringing this to you next month, is as a board, you can determine what percent of a child's final grade this year's TCAP scores count. In previous years, you could choose, I think, anything between 15 and 25 usually. This year, the state is allowing us anything between zero and 25 because of COVID-19. So, but that's something you'll have to approve as a board, and we'll be bringing it to you. Again, we're just now digesting all of this. The last thing is the summary of the Teacher Pay and Appropriations Bill. That's, we've already talked about that today a little bit. That's the 2% that the instructional component, the BEP, has been raised by 2% from January to the end of June. What they did is they said, okay, they looked at how much we were given for the year. They raised it by 2%, and then they cut that in half because it's only half a year. And that's where that $157,500 came from that I mentioned earlier. So, and it says Governor Lee has discussed the adding another 2% to that and making it a 4% beginning July 1st, but that wasn't a part of this bill. The only thing in this bill is the 2% going back to January 1st of this year, so not past July 1st. So that's, you know, if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them, but that's, that's the four big pieces of legislation that came out of the week-long special session. All right. Then the last thing I have on here, points of information, is a conflict of interest statement. In talking with Mr. Bradford and with our comptroller's office and Representative Marsh and some other folks, one of the potential findings that we have countywide is the conflict of interest in a finding. Cole, you may, there may be better words to use than that, but is that, is that how it's worded in the findings? And while he's walking up here, just to give you an example of the discussions we've had, there's, I think there's a county commissioner who has a spouse that works at a local, a tractor supply company. And so if we do business with Tractor Supply Company, the Act of 81, you know, if it's interpreted a certain way, would say that would be a conflict of interest. And so in our discussions, what we have discovered is, we probably couldn't do business in Lincoln County if we can't do business with places that people's spouses work and so forth, especially when you read into the conflict of interest statement within the Act of 81. So I believe Representative Marsh and maybe Senator Reeves have, are pushing a bill through that's going to help with that. But it's been recommended that as a board member, if you, if you would acknowledge any conflict that, that might make you think of, the one I gave you, and Cole may want to give another one.
Yeah. So just to add to that a little bit, the 81 Act basically has a, in that statute, it states that basically not only a school board member, commissioner, elected official, it even says employees, cannot have a direct financial interest, but cannot even have a indirect personal beneficial interest. So the example you gave with a commissioner that spouse just works for TSC, it makes no distinction between a commissioner and employee. So you could have a educational assistant at the school whose husband works at Walmart. What they're saying is, the county can't do business with Walmart. So you can see how far-reaching. It would basically eliminate probably the majority of places we do business with. When you look at our utility companies, you know, it's kind of, so there has been a lot of correspondence with the legislators. I think they've worked with the comptroller's office, the Tennessee County Commission Association. So the last legislation that I saw drafted, it puts it more in line with the general conflict law. The general conflict law says if you have an indirect interest, you have to disclose it. So that's a little more background to it. But, you know, this law's been in effect over 30 years, but just here recently, I guess there's been a view along those lines.
Hey, Cole, what I passed-
Now, the report has not been, we have not, the report has not been released yet. So, but I think that's, but it's out there known that this is something that I think the comptroller's office and legislators know they need to get cleaned up, because, you know, they, the state tries to, they encourage everyone to go to the 81 Act, the centralized, if you even look in a non-81 Act county, one of the best-practice recommendations from the comptroller's office is to consolidate and centralize. But what you're going to find, if this is starting to be interpreted, that you can't have a custodian at the school who's, I mean, it kind of even goes farther than that. You could have a custodian at the school, and the person that has the mowing contract at the courthouse, if this custodian's husband weedies for this company, they're saying that's an indirect personal beneficial interest, and you can't do business with that mowing company. So you can see how kind of far-reaching that gets.
And what I've passed around is some of the verbiage that, that we're, we think is going to be included in going forward.
So you do have that, right?
Yeah, I do have that.
And what I saw that was being proposed, I think makes sense. If there is an indirect personal beneficial interest, we can still do business with these companies that we pointed out. Those individuals would just need to go. There'll be a list kept in the mayor's office, and they'll just have to disclose it there. And again, that's more in line with the general conflict of interest statute, but that's one of the things with the 81 Act, is just for whatever reason, it adds employees and those, and it literally would, like Dr. Heath said. I mean, I think we could probably over, how many school employees do we have, Dr. Heath?
About 600.
We probably have 500 or 600 health system employees, Lincoln County Board of Public Utility employees. So if you start looking at over 1,000 employees countywide, and if a spouse or a dependent child works for any company that you can't do business with them, I would say the majority of businesses would be eliminated. Because the other thing with the 81 Act, it doesn't allow for sole sources of justification. So, you know, you got FPU, you've got the water board. Now, I'm not saying we can't do business, I mean, but it steals the same situation. UPS, post office, FedEx, some of those critical services, so. But what I've seen, if it's, let me see, can I, may I see what y'all were looking at? What I see-
It's saying you got to be a partner owner, proprietor, or going to have a, get a bonus at the end, or sharing, some kind of sharing with-
Yeah.
And I think this the way it needs, this allows-
Yeah, that eliminates salary.
Right.
That's why we need to eliminate salary.
Yeah. And then you've got the, and it talks about the indirect interest, the county mayor keeping a list. So that's doable. And, you know, allows us to do our job. You know, if you're not careful, you get so paralyzed with, you know, trying to run around and, and I think the list is a good idea, if it's kind of the onus on the official or the employee.
In my, in my discussion with comptroller's office, they suggested that anyone who might be in this situation during a meeting, disclose. I have filled out, when I first got on the school board, I filled out a conflict of interest disclosure form that I worked for Lincoln County Vending, but it was suggested that I do that during a regular board meeting. So-
And may I, can I add to yours?
Sure.
Because I don't, to make sure that we get the full point across. We competitively bid paper products and custodial products. About three years, three years ago, we did. Lincoln County Vending was the low bidder. So it was competitively bid contract. Lincoln County Vending was the low bidder. I recommended it. The board awarded it. So-
I abstain from the low.
Yeah, we're in the final, this, and it was a one-year contract with two one-year renewal terms. The board this passed, for this fiscal year, awarded, extended it that last time. So that contract's up to bid anyways at the end of this fiscal year. But it was a competitively bid contract, but, and I don't think anybody really thought about it until this kind of, this issue came up, so.
So I don't know if anybody else wants to, I don't know if you want to make, you know, if any of you have, can think of a conflict that you might have now that you want to acknowledge and that it be a part of the minutes, or if you want to wait and talk more about it and do it next month?
I got none.
Okay.
Would I have a conflict?
You might.
With the commissioner, county commissioner?
I don't think that would be, I don't think that would be, this is involving purchasing, so I don't think so. Well, I don't know. You know, honestly, we all, if we all probably, you know, if we all look hard enough, we all might have one. We don't think we do, so.
Yeah. Services, would that be?
I mean, it's anything. It's services, goods.
All right. So what I recommend we do then is, is let's see where Representative Marsh goes with this, you know, because I think it's part of his legislation, and when we get clarification, we'll go from there. Okay? That's all I have.
One thing I was going to ask before we conclude, there was something that I hadn't seen in the retreat of TCAP lease. Is that anything that needs the board action?
No, it doesn't.
Okay, okay. The final thing I have before we adjourn is, if you look around the room, you'll see all the thank yous from the different school systems, it being school board appreciation week. Again, we realize what they do each and every day is the most vital part of our kids being in the, in the system, and we thank you for what you've provided for us.
The goodies across the back you need to take home with you.
Yeah, the back, I'm sorry.
Those need to go home with you.
And the other thing, we will thank the culinary at the high school for providing our treats and dessert at the back. And again, we appreciate what you've acknowledged that we do, but again, each and every day, it's you and the school system that what makes Lincoln County education what it is rank-wise, and what it is that our students that go out into the workforce, college, or later, that are prepared to meet the challenges. Anybody else got anything else before entertaining a motion to adjourn? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Mr. Tucker moves.
Second.
Mr. Bradley, second. All in favor, please-